Good morning, I want to welcome everybody who's here to participate today. I am pleased to be a part of this hearing in particular to be able to hear from individuals from the different SCI institutions to get their input. And then, Mr. Bergstrom, did you want me to call on the people on the list to see who wishes to speak?
Yes, Judge, I think first, let me just note, I believe there's a couple of other commission members on the line. I see Senator Street is participating, as is District Attorney Sunday. I believe those are now the three members with Judge Bernstein participating. We may have some other members joining. And so for today's hearing, we will just be receiving comments from individuals who who the Department of Corrections has worked to identify and who will be available. And we have four institutions that will be participating. SCI Houtsdale, SCI Huntington, SCI Mahanoi, and SCI Cambridge Springs. And I think we'll go through in that order. I know this is, you know, a lot of technology involved here connecting with these institutions. And so I'm going to ask Christie to help to manage the the access to the institutions. And I remind everyone, because we have so many people online, to please stay muted, except if you are speaking. And Christie will arrange, I think, first for SCI Houtsdale to be accessible. And then, Judge, I think you have the list of individuals from SCI that have been identified. If not, we can provide that for you, or we can identify individuals through that. And then, any kind of questions or comments will be limited to commission members. So to that degree, this is a closed hearing. But as I said, there are opportunities throughout the week and next week for other, for members of the public to comment and ask questions. So with that, I'll turn it back to the judge and to Christie to make available SCI Houtsdale.
So Houtsdale should be able to unmute on their side?
Yeah, we're unmuted. Hello.
Good morning. Good morning to all of you. Now, I have a list of the individuals who are to speak, but my list doesn't indicate who is with what institution. So my thought is perhaps the individual who wants to speak, if they can state their name first. Because mine, my list has DOC at the end, but not where they're from. So are you okay with that? If we just have them state their name first, and then we can go from there?
That's great, Judge, and I'll try to get you a list so that you'll have it for the future. But for, there's three from SCI. I'll get it to you. Thank you.
I have the list. It doesn't divide them on my list. All right, so gentlemen, if you could just, whoever's going to speak, just introduce yourself, state your name, and then you may address the commission. Thank you.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Yada White, SCI Houtsdale. I wanted to first thank everybody who was involved for having these meetings and getting together and trying to come up with new ways of addressing sentencing. A lot of the proposals are very good concerning addressing very important issues who have plagued the system in the past. You know, in my current situation, you know, being 48 years old and in and out of juvenile plus, you know, adult corrections. Most of this information, to me, you know, is going to be beneficial to people who are coming into the system now and for the next, say, 25, 30, 40 years. There isn't too much information concerning trying to address a lot of these issues that create the problems that we have. You know, that make people commit crimes and bring them to jail in the first place. So I just hope that, you know, while the conversations are still being had, people just understand that there's a lot of problems going on in society, and a lot of people need a lot of help before they commit a crime. And then, once you in prison, you have to be able to change, and you need help to change. You know, and in order for somebody to return to the public, and you want them to be an upstanding citizen and things of that nature. I think you have to invest in what they're doing and invest in them while they're in the Department of Corrections also. So.
Good morning. My name is Freddie Cruz. I just have, I have a few questions. I have a question related to proposals, related to Section 303.4. The redesigning of the prior record score categories and procedures by replacing our current eight prior record score category to four, zero, low, medium, high. How would this new system be able to target distinction between the actual sentences given? Will aggravated mitigated factors change the levels? Meaning, if an individual is in the low category, can they be at risk of becoming a medium due to aggravated mitigated factors or vice versa?
That's a good question. I'll turn that over to Executive Director Bergstrom to answer.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Under the proposal, what the commission is trying to do is two things. Number one, to simplify how the prior record score works. And secondly, to reduce the impact of the prior record score. And so generally speaking, if someone is in a low category, aggravating or mitigating factors would not move them out of the low category. They remain there, but courts always have the discretion to sentence above or below the recommendation. So you generally stay in that category. If you committed future crimes or additional crimes, you could move to higher categories. I guess the other provision is, the commission has put into this, into this working draft, the idea of what we call lapsing, where stale or old prior records might be removed from the prior record score. So that's still, there's a lot of work that would need to be done on that, a lot of rules about how it would operate. But the idea is if someone had a very old prior record, prior conviction, or even prior adjudication, that some of those, or maybe many of those, would be removed from the prior record score. So over time, if you were law abiding, or if a lot of time had passed, some of those prior convictions could be removed from the prior record score. So those are some of the suggestions that we have out there for comment.
And correct me if I'm wrong, from the executive director, but something else, by revamping the prior record score, the way it currently stands now, the primary focus, sentence should be the offense before the judge. But what's happened with the prior record score is, depending on where you fall and what the crime is, the data shows that sometimes defendants were looking at sentences up to nine times greater based on their prior record score, which clearly takes the emphasis away from the current offense. And so one of the other attempts in adjusting the prior record score is, well, not attempts, what it will do is reduce that substantially. And I believe it's set up now such that at the highest point of the prior record score, it won't do more than double what your standard guideline range would be if you had a zero prior record score. Is that correct?
That's correct, Judge. I think the exception to that would be crimes of violence. Under the current guidelines, the sentence recommendation could go up to the statutory limit, the longest minimum sentence. And that would be retained for repeat violent offenses. But otherwise, as a general practice, the guideline recommendations would be generally in the highest category, about two times what the standard, what the baseline recommendation. And then, of course, the judge has the ability to depart from the guidelines or aggravate above if the court felt there were reasons to do so. But as the judge said, the real focus here is to really focus on the current conviction offense and have the, you know, the sentence recommendation sort of linked to that more than the prior record. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I have one more question, and this is related to proposals in Section 303.3. With the proposed expansion to 42 categories with six pertaining to murder one and murder two, the mandatory minimum sentence still holds life imprisonment without the possibility of parole. Can adjustments be made to modify these current provisions, at least to consider opportunity for eligibility of parole?
I can, I can address that initially, and then if the judge or others have comments. The sentencing guidelines are advisory guidelines, so they're recommendations to the judge. So if the General Assembly has enacted a mandatory provision, the guidelines can't undo a mandatory. So for murder one and murder two, if the individual's 18 years of age or older, there are, you know, there are limits. There are mandatory sentences related to life without the possibility of parole or the death penalty. For those under 18 years of age, there are mandatory minimum sentencing provisions that provide sort of a floor for how long the sentence can be. And the guidelines can only make recommendations sort of in excess of that. So at least for murder one and murder two, the commission is working within the within the framework that's set up by the mandatories enacted in statute. When we move down to murder three, which is outside of those top six categories, then for offenses like that, there's a little bit more flexibility because the mandatories that exist are not as great or as many. And so there is more flexibility there for the commission to make recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment on that?
What's that?
I was just wondering if anybody else on the commission or present had anything to add. All right, Mr. Cruz, do you have anything else, sir?
Yeah, I have, I have one more question that's related to attachment to, to the 25 years crime-free period. If a defendant has successfully completed 25 years crime-free since the last conviction, would the remaining adult convictions be removed? If it's a crime of violence, the concept is great, however, 25 years is a very broad and extensive period. I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, these are, these are general proposals. We tried to put some examples, build some examples into, to generate comments from the public. Keep in mind that right now, there are no lapsing provisions for adult criminal convictions. And for juvenile adjudications, the lapsing provisions are very limited and require crime-free periods. So this is an attempt by the commission to at least put on the table for discussion what lapsing would look like, which offenses would be removed, and when and how. And so I can tell you in sort of very broad kind of statements, the decision about whether a prior conviction goes away seems to be linked to two factors. One is, how serious was that prior conviction? And so you'll see that the different categories take into account the different grading of those offenses. Now, some have argued that's not detailed enough. You know, certain repeat or violent offenses maybe should never lapse or should be treated differently than other offenses. So, you know, that's something we've heard and something the commission will have to look at. So the one issue is, how serious was that prior conviction offense or adjudication? And then, as you mentioned, the second issue is, what's the duration? When did it happen? And there's a lot of, a lot of thoughts around that, too. Some individuals think it should just be a flat period of time. You know, when you turn a certain age, or after X number of years, it just goes away. And you can see there at the lower end, for less serious offenses, that's set at 10 years. And at the upper end, at least for the categories we have, are 25 years. And it's not clear, I mean, we're asking for comments about that, whether that should apply to violent offenses, crimes of violence, like rape, or robbery, or murder three, or something like that, any kind of murder. So those are questions we're looking for comments on. The other thing is, should there be a requirement of law-abiding behavior? So should we only remove those if the person was not, had not committed any crime during that period of time? Because there's some, some sort of definitions you could use where you could say, time passes, it goes away. That's sort of what we do with DUI right now. We have what's called a 10-year look-back period. And if there was a DUI before that, doesn't matter if you've been crime-free or not, it goes away. But there's, you know, plenty of others that would say, no, it should be a crime-free period. And then, one final aspect of that is, should it matter if you're on the street or not? So let's say you had 25 years crime-free, but you were in a DOC the whole time, in an institution the whole time. Should that be treated differently than if you were out on the street the whole time? So when do you start the clock? When do you start looking at that period of time? So again, the commission is putting a lot of issues on the table, trying to generate some public comment to help inform what the commission does. And these are some of the proposals that came up over the years, so we're seeking your comments. So, you know, I can talk about what, you know, what people have said about whether 25 years is too long or not long enough. But it's more important what you think. Any comments you have or suggestions you have about what the commission should consider?
Well, thank you. That's all, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Morgan, I believe, is next. Do you want to speak?
Yes, my name is I've been fortunate enough to be on the VSU here at SCI Houtsdale. Mr. White says something about after somebody comes to prison, that's where, that's when the real change starts. And I think that should be under the microscope also. When you come to prison, there's not too many things that help somebody go back out. And the reason I'm saying that, because I'm on the VSU, and we talk about reentry, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We talk about four pillars, reentry, which is employment, housing, medical, and treatment, NAA. And I think that that should be addressed also with this sentencing matrix. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Morgan, a year or two ago, the commission did a round of parole guideline public hearings because we had a mandate to work with the parole board on parole guidelines and recommitment ranges. And so we had an initial round of public hearings in 2000, and in fact, involved, I think, four institutions during that time. And what you raise right now is an important issue, and one of the considerations for parole guidelines in terms of, what do you take into account when thinking about parole? And what do you take into account if someone was on parole and is recommitted? And exactly the point that you raise about sort of preparation and participation in programming, all of those kind of things are important factors, and to some degree, they relate more to the paroling decision than to the initial sentence. I think you're absolutely right. Having the right programming and services, other things like that within the institution is incredibly important. And participation in that is really important. But it probably impacts more the decision about paroling and when to parole and under what conditions to parole than maybe sentencing. And so, just so that you know, the commission is going to revisit the proposals we have out there on parole. And probably next week at our commission meeting, move to have another round of public hearings on parole guidelines and recommitment ranges. And we're committed to having the SCI's involved in those public hearings as well. So if you have an interest in this, I hope you'll look at the proposals we put out there and maybe participate in probably May or June in the public hearing we have on parole guidelines and recommitment ranges.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. One thing, Kenner? I think that when you're talking about the parole, I think that that is one of the most important things because if you have somebody who is incarcerated, and let's just say, they do, they have a 10-year sentence, right? And during that 10 years, they have no, you know, violent acts, and, you know, they educate themselves. They do everything that they possibly can, or whatever is available, to, you know, think about changing and living, you know, differently in the future. And then, they get a positive recommendation from the Department of Corrections. And these are the people who have monitored them for the course of this time that they've been incarcerated. And then, when they see the parole, you know, they might get a 24-month hit because of the crime that they committed 10 years ago. So it's very discouraging when you have someone who's been through a lot, trying to change, you know, with not a lot, you know, being offered, right? And then, when they do feel like they can go home and, you know, be on a different path, they get that hit, and it also, it makes you feel like you probably always felt that whenever you try to do something right or live differently, there's always so many obstacles that knock you down. This is one of the main reasons you have so much recidivism. You know, it's because the system doesn't work with the change. You know, the system constantly sees the person as the crime they committed, you know. And I think that that needs to be addressed, you know, where everybody has to work together. You know, and when these decisions are made, you know, the mind state of the person, you know, and things like that are just taken into consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. White. That's a really important point. And we heard, I think, similar things when we had the first round of hearings on the parole guidelines. And we are, you know, trying to make some modifications to our proposals based on what we heard. And that's why we will have another round of public hearings. But just, you know, as you know, there's no right to parole in Pennsylvania. And so, you know, we have to start with that in mind. And when a person comes for their first parole hearing, you know, what we and the parole board, I think, have been talking about and trying to build into these guidelines is, number one, taking into account the person's preparedness for parole. So have they participated in programming? What's their behavior been like in the institution, misconducts, things like that? What are they doing to show that they're ready to be paroled? That they're ready to, like, start on the right track down in the community? And what have they done while in the institution to prepare for that? So preparedness is a big part of it. There's also risks. So, you know, are there factors that they've been trying to address? You know, triggers and things like that, that they're aware of and trying to address to not repeat the same behavior if they head out? So there's a lot of factors there. But so again, I hope that when we put out those, that new draft of the parole guidelines and we have the public hearings, that you take a look at them and either participate like this, or provide us with written comments. It's really helpful. We got a lot out of the hearings we did back in 2000, and I expect the same this time around. Thanks.
Judge, Judge, I'm sorry, Matt, can Matt make a quick comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I saw you came on, so I was going to ask if anybody else had any response. Go ahead.
This is just, this is just brief. I just want to thank everyone for participating today. And as a district attorney, it's so important for me to hear from inmates that have lived through everything that we talk about, sort of from a philosophical level on our end. It's really important for us to make sure that we understand what we can do to make the public safer. And there are many, many times where making the public safer, I'll say it right, I mean, there's a major part of that is making sure that inmates have the ability to get the tools to be successful once you leave prison, because we all here believe in redemption. And so I just want to thank you for taking the time. This isn't a waste of your time. We're listening. I'm taking copious notes, and I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to share with us. And so that's really all I had to say at this point, Judge.
Thank you, DA Sunday. And Mr. Morgan, Mr. White, or Mr. Cruz have anything additional to add at this point?
No, thank you. That'll be all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think we all agree with the sentiments of DA Sunday. I picture when people hear about the commission meeting, I don't know. Maybe, I just don't know, maybe what people picture, but knowing the intent. And it's a group of people who are really trying to make the system improve. So everybody here, being a part of that today, helps us in that direction. So from the gentleman from SCI Houtsdale, thank you for your participation. And as for all of you who are here, please do keep aware for the upcoming parole guidelines, public hearings, because I think you'll have a lot to participate and to give for information for us at that time as well. And then, Executive Director Bergstrom, and then from Houtsdale, if you can mute, just as a reminder, and everybody can remind me to mute as I need. Are we going to Huntington next?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, so we're going to go to SCI Huntington. I have, I'm probably going to mess up the first name, John Granas?
Grantis.
Grantis, well, yep, there you have it. So from there, I'll try and smooth it out. So, Mr. Grantis, you can go ahead and address the commission.
Okay, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I really only have one question. The gentleman from Houtsdale has covered a lot of the stuff. According to 303.15 Offense Listing, Proposed Offense Gravity Score Adjust Assignments, I reviewed them, and they look like they've all been doubled. Is there a reason why the gravity score has been doubled on all categories?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the last attachment, the, like, proposed matrix, you'll see that we moved from having primarily 14 Offense Gravity Score categories to 36. And then, we moved from having one category for murder one and two, which is currently OGS 15, to having six from 37 to 42. So to some degree, we're sort of spreading out the sentence recommendations over a lot more of those Offense Gravity Score categories. So one of the things that I think we have in that table, if you look at a given offense and look at the current OGS, and then you look at the proposed one, there should also be information on what the recommendation is for a zero prior record score. I think we included that in there, or maybe we did not. You'd have to actually look at the matrix, which is that last document, it's attachment four. But if you look at that, what you'll find is that we tried to make sure that the proposed recommendation fits into the current guideline recommendation. So here's, I don't want to go into too much detail, but let me give this a shot. Under the current guidelines, we have really wide ranges. So someone could be recommended probation and for county jail, and maybe even state prison in our standard range recommendation. And the idea we're trying to get at, based on these recommendations we received, was to focus on a single sentencing option, like to have, yes, sir, that's the matrix. So to have a range that's just about probation, or just about county jail, or just about state prison. So the first recommendation to the judge is, what should be the, what we call the disposition? What should be the sentence, probation, jail, or prison? And then, the second question, or the second recommendation is, what should that, what should the length of that sentence be for probation? Should it be a year or two years? For county jail, should it be three months or nine months? For state prison, 12 months or, you know, 40? For state prison, 12 months or, you know, 42 months? And so, so what we tried to do with, with these, this big expanded list of 36 uh, sort of standard categories is to focus just on a given sentence and sort of a, a narrower range of recommended duration. So, so instead of having, um, a range that would be like under the current guidelines, um, you know, RS to nine, which would allow probation or non of, of, um, a minimum sentence to jail. And as an aggravating factor would allow state prison. We're just focused on whether that should be a probation recommendation or should that be a jail recommendation? And so, so if you, if you think about sort of rebuilding things around that, then you'll see you need a lot more of these, these categories to have, you know, very targeted kind of recommendations. And then what we tried to do with the recommendations was to make sure they fit into the current range. So for instance, if you had that RS to nine that allowed probation and up to nine months in a county jail as a minimum term, we tried to figure out what judges typically did. Did, did they typically put people on probation? Or did they pit typically put people in jail? And so based on that, based on what we saw judges doing for that type of offense, we either select a probation recommendation or we'd select a jail recommendation. And then we tried to come up with the duration of that, the, the length of probation or the length of jail based on what sentences were reported to us, what judges were doing. And so I know it looks really complicated and it is, but, but the idea was to try to make sure that the new sentence recommendations sort of fit into the footprint of the current guidelines. But just narrowed the focus on one option or another and on a, on the amount of time that was sort of typically imposed right now. So that's all the work that goes into that. And again, it, I know it almost looks like guidelines because we wanted to provide enough detail to everyone so they could see what we were trying to think or what we were trying to do, that we were trying to sort of use the current guidelines, but really narrow the focus of what judges are typically doing right now. So that was probably about five minutes longer than it should have been, but, um, I hope that, that made some sense.
Okay. I, I understand that. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, James Deal. You can go ahead.
How you doing? Thank you for giving us, giving us this time to speak. Uh, the majority of my questions and information have already, you've already basically answered. The gentleman at SCI Housdale did a fine job. And they had a lot of the same information that I had. That my one question would be, is any of this, if this stuff, I believe that all this stuff is a very good start and, you know, it takes into consideration a lot of the stuff that's holding people back over the years, especially how it seems like they have such a, so many people are coming to prison, doing their time, and then they're going back in their communities and they're being unnecessarily having long periods of unnecessary community supervision. And I believe that a lot of that could be, you know, help with a lot of the stuff in here. The only question I really have is would, if these things are implemented, would it be like retroactive at all to any of the people that are already serving time or anything with sentencing enhancements, anything of that nature?
Yeah. Thanks for that call, uh, that question. Um, there's the, the way guidelines generally work is they're what we call prospective. So they take, they, they start with offenses. Um, we look at the date of the offense and the guidelines apply to those, um, those offenses committed on or after, after the start of the guidelines. So that, that's just to try to be fair and to put people on notice about what the guidelines will be. Um, because the guideline sometimes can help and sometimes can hurt in, in terms of, you know, a, a bigger or smaller sentence or a recommendation. So we try to play it fair by only making it apply in the future for offenses committed on or after the date the guidelines go into effect. But having said that, when you have new guidelines in place that have been adopted, they went through a public hearing process. The general assembly gets to review them. Um, you know, they, they have, you know, they can be referenced by judges as a reason for aggravating or mitigating. The court could say, I know the current guidelines recommend this. Um, but you know, these proposed guidelines would, would increase or decrease the sentence. And I, I want to give consideration to that because of the, you know, the, the factors that apply to this case. So, so, so new guidelines um, won't apply to old offenses, but they can be considered by the court if there's a resentencing or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, I believe, um, Ronald Davis is next.
Yes, uh, yes, the guys up Housdale pretty much wrapped up everything I was gonna ask about. So I don't have any, uh, questions.
Okay. Thank you to all of you for your participation. Um, and then SCI, uh, Mahoney, I'm not saying Mahaney, Mahanoi, there you go.
So can we ask Huntington if you wouldn't mind mute, making sure you're on mute?
Thank you.
Mahanoi should be able to unmute.
Yes, when they say.
Okay, now I have Mahanoi downright. So, um, let me make my screen bigger so I can read. All right, Anthony Perkins.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for this opportunity.
Good morning.
Yes, good morning, ma'am. Um, there's a lot that I wanted to, um, talk about and a lot of men did answer a lot of questions pertaining to that. But I was looking at proposal 303.16. And attachment four, proposed basic sentence metric from the old basic sentence metric from 2014, it was only, uh, five uh, prior record scores from zero to five. And it only had like five levels. The new one have seven. Um, I was reading some things pertaining to Mr. Senator Street. And Senator Street was talking about the geriatric. Uh, could a review board be set up for the men that have been in prison for a long period of time, 40 years, 50 years? Then wheelchairs and they're not a threat to society. Uh, I believe most of these men probably have a life sentence. They're over 65 to 70 years old. Uh, a lot of them are have diseases and sickness and they costing the state a lot of money by being here. Is some could be set up for these men, whereas though that they can possibly be freed one day?
Let me start.
We're having a delay and, uh, that's, now you look like you're not frozen anymore. I'm gonna try again.
Okay, let me try again. I'll turn off my camera and see if this works. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I'll start and then, uh, if Senator Street wanted to come, and I think he's on the call. Um, the, the guidelines only apply to sentencing. And so there's not an opportunity to uh, use the guidelines for, um, for resentencing or, or clemency. But there's the Board of Pardons that has the authority to recommend clemency, reductions in sentences and so forth. So, um, so some of any of the proposals you might have that, that, um, deal with applying these or considering these things to existing cases. Um, you know, they may be recommendations for the Board of Pardons as opposed to the sentencing commission, but we can certainly make that available to them and, and you can as well. But, but sentencing is really for new conviction offenses and sentences for those, not for reviewing previous sentences.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
And, and Senator Street, I don't know if he's present or wanting to make comment. I think, I think probably, uh, the executive director responded and answered that question. Um, I believe did I, uh, guardy right? He's present?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity. Um, good morning. Uh, the only thing I really had that I wanted to touch on was under attachment to the lapsing provisions. Um, I want to say that I think it's great trying to put this into effect and like to where records can come off. Uh, I know in my past experience, I've had a job to where I was getting rave reviews from my bosses, but I could not get promoted because I had a record. Um, so I think the putting this opportunity for these records to come off is great. I just think maybe it should be reviewed of the time length for these, um, to where some of them shouldn't be as high because by the time that that record could come off, you're already past where you could be for a job.
Thank you. That's go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, if I could just comment on that, there's, just to be clear, when, when we're recommending this lapsing of the prior record score, prior convictions, it is, it is solely for purposes of the sentence recommendation. So it would remove the, the conviction in the, in the calculation of the prior record score. It would not, you know, expunge or remove a conviction on a record. But as you may know, there's been a separate effort underway in the general assembly. First resulted in clean slate legislation, but there's, there's review of that that, that would i- in effect, look at other ways or other, um, I guess, opportunities for the expungement of, of, of stale records, of old records. So, um, so that would be, that's a separate effort that would be, um, through the general assembly. But for purposes of sentence recommendations, the commission can, uh, develop rules about lapsing of prior convictions that they're not counted in the prior record score. So that's our focus here. But I think there's, there's a separate effort related to clean slate and other provisions that, that you're probably interested in as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do any of you gentlemen have anything additional to comment on? Oh, okay. We, we wanna just express our thanks again for your participation. And if you could please mute, I'm, I'm gonna move on to.
Wait, wait. You did?
Oh.
My name is Dwight. My name is Dwight Say, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to comment on, uh, in regards to your commentary of NXA does promote greater certainty in sentencing and more effective, effective use of resources and programs. I was, uh, wanted to speak on the fact that the sentencing today, they're giving out and the guidelines and anything else is important, but the structuring of those sentencing is not even being addressed. Like you're giving, they're giving guys time, but not giving them no like structured classes, uh, skill, skill, uh, classes. You know, nothing that to rehabilitate them. And guys that come upstate just sitting around doing nothing with that time and going back out in the street and remit and committing crimes again because they have better options and choices. And I think that, uh, the sentencing should be based off of, you know, re, reeducating them. Like teaching them job skills, getting a GED, uh, giving them choices. So when they do go back out into society, they have better choices of what to do with their lives. And they say, a lot of guys come upstate and I've been down 25 years and I've seen guys come upstate sit for 10 years just watching TV, playing sports. And don't try to better yourself, go out in there and commit a crime again because they have the resources to make better decisions. And I was wondering, could like the sentencing be structured where a judge could say, okay, during this, I'm gonna give you 10 years, but during this 10 years, you're gonna do two years of this or two years of that, two years of that. And have those programs available for them to change. Cause if you don't change them or try to give them chances to change, then they're gonna do their 10 years, go out and be the same person or worse when they get back out in the street. And I think that should be addressed more so than just the sentencing. The time given is respectable, but what are you doing with the time that you're giving them? And, and have given some guys choices doesn't work because some, a lot of guys, suddenly these young guys come up these days, they don't want to better themselves. You know, but I think the judge, the judge had the right to give them the time. They had the right to, you know, help them better themselves by make sure they get the right, you know, things to change. Could you comment on that?
Sure. That's, that's a great point. And, um, the first thing I'll say is I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, the Department of Corrections through, you know, classification and the other work that they do, try to come up with programming that, that is a good fit, that helps. But, but you, you raise an important point. There, there is a little bit of a separation between what judges can do and what the Department of Corrections can do. So, so judges can impose the sentence to the Department of Corrections. They commit someone to DOC and they dictate the, the terms in terms of the minimum and maximum term. But judges really don't have the authority to, to talk about specific programming that the person gets into. That really is the responsibility of the department. But over the last couple of years, there was some legislation that, that worked on trying to, um, improve the coordination on that. Where, where, when a judge is sending someone to the DOC, the judge can also identify specific programs that the person's either eligible for or not eligible for, and the judge can always recommend programming. So I think, I think you're right that there's, there's like this opportunity for judges to, to maybe communicate more. But, but it's really about coordinating between the judge and the DOC. And I think there's a lot of efforts underway to improve that, but there's probably a lot of work to do. And as, as you know, as you, as you mentioned, you know, for some individuals, that's going to be really helpful. And for others, you know, it, it won't do much, you know, that, you know, the, the individual wants to, needs to, you know, identify and, and commit to programming and things like that. And so there, there's, um, sometimes some limits on that. But I, I think you make a good point about um, better sort of coordination between the judge and the DOC, recognizing that DOC is the one who really uh, makes the final decision about who goes into what programming and when.
When that means mandatory. Okay. Well, this, this is my question. This is my question as far as the, uh, like, you know, you do a pre-sentence evaluation of, of inmate. Uh, you have a lot of guys come out here with mental issues and stuff like that. I think that if that's taken into consideration, anything else, the DOC, yes, you said, you're right. The DOC has problem with the, the ability to give them the program, prescription programs. But what about the fact that like, um, uh, for example, uh, just the, the structuring, like a lot of guys come up here, they never got like structure. Like some guys come up here, don't even make up their beds in the morning, you know? And this is because they was no, their upbringing and what they went through on the street and anything else. It does the, like the coordination between the judge and the jail and anything, like you said, the communication gotta be both ways, but I think we should, somebody has to be held accountable as far as rehabilitating these guys.
Yeah.
And that, that's what's more important, I think, is rehabilitation and getting these guys to help they need.
Yeah. And you raise a really important point. Um, you know, back when, when the, when the boot camp was first established in the early nineties, you know, part of, part of that was exactly what you were saying. There were people that were coming to DOC that, that were pretty young and just needed, you know, basic stuff. So, you know, we think about boot camp with marching and, you know, all this kind of stuff, but it was also just, you know, some basic things like you're talking about, you know, making your bed and doing things like that. And so, so I, I think, you know, I, I know the DOC really is trying to, to do what they can and they have a, a big job ahead of them, but, but I think, you know, they're, they're participating in this and they're, they're hearing these kind of comments too. And I'm hoping, you know, that, that, you know, both they and, and judges can, can try to, um, you know, work on, on improving exactly what you're talking about. I think it's a, it's a good point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Say, I just wanted to, since I'm one of the people that sentences, just to let you know from, from a judge's perspective, the fact that we are tied in terms of when somebody is sent to the state, how much we can impose. I know many of us, and the reason it used to be that the judges were the ones for state drug treatment program, um, and boot camp kind of were the drivers for who were eligible. And I believe it was being underutilized. So the reason it shifted hands to the DOC is because they're able to classify and make determinations. And those programs, I believe, are being utilized more frequently, which I think is a positive. I know from my perspective and from other judges I talk to frequently, uh, we want to see success. We want to see programming. So from, the judge has some authority, like, uh, Executive Director Bergstrom indicated, where we can basically legally, all I have to do is say you're not ineligible for a boot camp or a state drug treatment program. But I nevertheless, on my sentencing form, put that I strongly recommend those things. I also have put down suggestions in terms of mental health evaluations following any treatment. I don't know. Um, I understand that the limitations and programs, but my hope is if it's not something that's addressed, that it's something that's taken care of upon parole. But my hope is if it's not something that's addressed, that it's something that's taken care of upon parole with a parole officer. So that when you, you know, do get out, if that wasn't addressed in there, hopefully that is something that they're going to take into consideration upon parole. So just so you know, jud- judges are aware and concerned about all those things. And I think a lot of us are doing the best that we can with the authority that we have. But I appreciate your input and hearing that. Any questions or comments?
No, that was it for us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, I almost catch you off. So we're now we're going to switch over. I mean, if you can mute, we're going to go to S C I Cambridge Springs. I believe we have I have three individuals listed who are going to speak. Shelby Adams, you're first. And welcome.
Oh, hello. Thanks for having us. Uh, okay. I realize that most of America can't read or don't are not interested in reading anything longer than a text message anymore. But sentencing orders and recommendations by judges, sometimes they are not clear. And people need to be able to understand that and in terms of underlapping concurrence and overlapping concurrence. And I know that the problem sometimes is that people just commit crime after crime after crime, and it commits a lot of there's a lot of clerical issues going on on the sentencing orders and that sort of thing. But there's a lot of confusion. Sometimes there's a discrepancy, a particular crime at sentencing is triple R I eligible. However, if a box isn't checked, it may be in writing, but if a box isn't checked, then that's not honored by the DOC. And so a person, an inmate will have to then appeal to the judge and ask for this. And sometimes that gets lost in, you know, in paperwork and COVID delays and all that sort of thing. So I've seen that happen quite a few times here. There will be times when a judge recommends certain programming or follow ups, and they don't necessarily happen. And I know that you said that that falls on the DOC. But maybe there could be some sort of check and balance there to make sure that things do happen. When I entered prison like 10 years ago, 84% of people who were new commits were drug offenses. They needed, they obviously would need to have the the TC is what it's called up here, the therapeutic community. And some other drug evaluations and and mental health evaluations, things like that. Sometimes that's a little a really slow process. And sometimes I it doesn't happen at all for let's say an inmate has like a 20 year sentence. Okay, the therapeutic community is geared not only toward the drug use, but the behaviors around that. And significant behavioral modification is taught in these programs. And if someone is prescribed to take that, the DOC will then wait until the very end of that sentence that is 20 years in order for that to happen. Which is fabulous that it happens at all. But the the thing that it would have been beneficial to everyone is if that would have happened before the long sentence. So then the particular behaviors and problems, they could have looked at themselves early on instead of waiting 20 years and being that same person stuck in those same cycles. So again, I'm going on about that. And maybe that's not something that you're you're interested in at this point. But it's a it's a real problem here. And it probably should be addressed somehow. My questions on the the course of conduct in the packet that you gave us to read that the part where like incoate crimes. In okay, so there's a there's a codefendant situation. I'm just gonna what am I trying to say? Sorry. I want to know if codefendants, one has a lesser role in the offense. Will lesser sentencing considerations be given to them? That's reflected in the gravity score. But what about collateral consequences like Sorna registration and things like that? If if a woman is with a gentleman and they go out, gentleman commits a rape, she's sitting in the car. This is a true story. She needs to register for Sorna for a lifetime, just like he does, because she was somewhere in the area, didn't report it, domestic violence situation. So I'm just wondering about that. Should I be stopping for answers?
Yeah, why don't we? So I'm going to turn this over to the Executive Director.
Yeah.
Well, first, thanks so much for those and and looking for for more questions and comments. So let me let me just address two of the issues you raised. The one is about sort of the timing of of treatment and program participation like TC and that for someone who has a longer sentence. And and I know we've had a lot of these discussions with the DOC, and I know they try to, you know, balance a lot of things. You know, that the the numbers are down now, which probably provides a little bit more capacity to do more with with fewer individuals inside. But but I know it's always a struggle to try to figure out exactly what you're talking about. And if you have someone with a pretty long sentence, what do you do when they're initially there? And what do you do? You know, closer to potential release. And I know they've talked about, you know, trying to do some things early and then maybe boosters near release. But but that requires having, you know, programming available that they can that that they can use in that kind of way. And so you know, I think sometimes you know, they they want to make sure that the treatment's done. And sometimes if it can only be one done once, it it, you know, maybe it's done towards closer to release than admission. But I I think you'll appreciate that. I know the DOC appreciates that they're trying to do the best because they want to make effective use of the time when someone's there. And also make sure they're they're prepared for being available for for parole. And so you know, that I I think I'm glad you raised it. And I I know the DOC thinks about these things a lot and tries to plan appropriately. And sometimes it's resources and sometimes, you know, it's other things. But they're listening to this. And 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 the commission is as well. So we'll continue to look for opportunities to make the most of any time type of commitment time, because I I think, you know, we we all want better outcomes. And so so if if that's part of the equation, if that's some part of the the resolution, I I think, you know, we all want to work towards that. So thanks for for making that comment. Regarding the incoates, the codefendants and collateral consequences. You know, from the Commission's point of view about sentencing recommendations, we can, we can build in structures that would, you know, reduce or mitigate the sentence recommendation based on, you know, what may be viewed as as, you know, lesser degree of culpability or other things like that, or or the a lesser role. And so just in putting out these ideas for comments, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to articulate that. We're trying to suggest that maybe when we do these assignments of offense gravity scores, that we try to try to think differently of of incoates, like attempts and solicitations and conspiracies versus completed, or someone with a lesser role versus a greater role. But you know, as as you know, a lot of this, you know, prosecutors and others have to look at the facts of the case and determine, you know, what what happened. And and so, you know, there it's 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 complicated, but we can at least put a framework in place that has courts consider those things at sentencing and and give consideration to what might be mitigating circumstances. So that's what that's what we're trying to do. When we get to issues of collateral consequences, those are really generally statutory, and especially Sorna is is really based on the conviction offense. But what I can tell you is the the Commission is a an agency of the General Assembly. And one of our responsibilities is to make recommendations to the General Assembly. So I think, you know, one of the benefits of you talking about that and the Commission hearing that is that if the Commission thinks that there should be some type of adjustment in in statute to address those situations differently. That's something that in that can be recommended to the General Assembly generally, or or the Judiciary Committee or others for their consideration, because they would have to make the decision. The the final thing I'll mention specific to Sorna is that Pennsylvania's approach is really driven by federal stand that really created standards and mandates for for the the states. And so I think that's just one of those things that you know, that sometimes limits what we can do in Pennsylvania, because we we do have sort of prescriptions from from Congress or from the federal side that might limit what what we can do. But but I'm glad you raised it and we'll we'll at least take it back to the full Commission.
And yeah, Ms. Adams, if you can continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. With regard to what happens prior to sentencing, I find that a lot of people take guilty pleas. They have no idea what they're reading. They it appears to me they don't. They don't. They haven't been able to meet with a lawyer necessarily a lot. I know that the public defenders are always backed up. And a lot of times I've spoken to people here who have public defenders. And it's, you know, the reality is there's not much that you can do to reduce that caseload. But if there were greater access or some sort of education prior to the the sentencing, maybe in the county prisons, there are law libraries there, but people don't know what, how to use Alexis, or they don't know what an open plea is. They don't know just the terminology in general. And then they sort of sign their lives away, and then they just get up here to a state prison and say, oh, I don't know what even this means. What is this paperwork mean? So it just, if we could work on that, it would be great, getting some education. Not everybody's open to education, but at least if the option were there. It would probably also not clog up the appellate courts as much with poor filing and just filing in general that it doesn't need to happen.
Thank you. That's that's helpful. Absolutely.
The with a a prior, I'm sorry, with a PSI involved in prior to sentencing, it would probably, it's relevant a lot here that domestic violence was an issue, past abuse was an issue. And survey says that that should weigh a little bit more heavily with on the mitigation end of a sentence.
If I could just comment on on that, because I I think it's an important issue and 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 it there's sort of multiple sides to this whole issue with domestic violence, right? So the Commission during the the most recent sentencing guideline amendment included an enhancement for domestic violence, where we recommend an increase in the sentence recommendation, if the defendant you know, engaged in in assault behavior or whatever against a family member, a a significant other. And and so it was intended to to treat it more seriously, to take into account the the seriousness of domestic violence. And there's other provisions to that enhancement. But but there were there were individuals who spoke out against that enhancement. And I think the the direction they were coming from was that the victim may have been victimized over a period of time. And and although an imperfect defense, that that may have had been a contributing factor to the conviction offense. And so you can see how, you know, the the same sort of impact a case in both directions, where you would think in terms of it being sort of a mitigator, if the person was victim to domestic violence over a prolonged period of time versus the the aggressor repeatedly abusing a family member or someone like that. So so I think that's why we have the issue in in this working document, this working draft, because we're trying to figure out, you know, what is how how best to address that. And it could be that there's that there's an enhancement as well as a mitigator or or things like that. But I think you know, we should be thinking about how we address that, the terrible tragedy tragedy of domestic violence. We're trying to figure out how to give courts tools or how to recognize that as as part of the sentencing process. So any any suggestions you have on that would be helpful.
Yeah, I I fully admit that I know that women aren't always the victims in the domestic violence. I know it's always that way on Lifetime usually, but that's not reality. I know the gentlemen can be the victims too. I didn't mean to sound like that. Um, let's see. I feel like that's probably it.
Well, thank, thank you. And just on a comment on the domestic violence, maybe that's something that we can explore. Because I understand the issues that but for identification, is there something that we could obtain? Or is there some kind of tool that allows us to determine whether the the victim in a case or the defendant in the case is either just get more information about it. We do that on a lot of other so that we're more informed. I know there's a lot else that goes on before it overcomes to sentencing where you know, prosecutors and defense attorneys can look and work out plea agreements based upon those factors. And sometimes they're considered, but other times they're not. So I do very much like that suggestion to look into, is there some way we can get some kind of measure? Because there are times we would, I think, want to bump up and other times we want to bump down based upon those considerations. Is there anybody else from the Commission who wants to comment before we move on? None being noted. Ms. Breckney, I believe, is next.
Hello, I'm Carrie Ann Breckney. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, and I appreciate that you are taking the time to go over these guidelines and make changes. I have been incarcerated for almost 14 years. And one thing that I have seen is that there are vast inconsistencies in the sentencing in the state of Pennsylvania. Um, sometimes things are extremely disproportionate and don't always reflect mitigating and aggravating factors. Also, one thing that I've seen is that the guidelines are not easily comprehended by the offenders, like Ms. Adams was saying, unless our lawyers really explain to us what we're looking at and explain the guidelines to us. For instance, you can be a zero on the prior record score. And they'll tell you, well, your gravity score is this. And you look at it and say, well, that's, you know, nine to 16. So I guess I'm getting a nine to 16 month sentence. And then when you go to court, you are given, you know, double that time, like a 16 to whatever it is. And then you're not really explained to that things could run concurrent or consecutive. So that was one of the things that I wanted to dress address concurrent and consecutive sentencing. Sometimes it seems that there's too much leeway in this where first time offender could be given five counts. And then they're given the maximum sentence because all the counts are un-consecutive. So they go from what they thought was looking at a two to three year sentence to a 15 to 30 years of incarceration. It seems that there's also drastic differences in length of time that people with the same charges are sentenced to. Also, that someone with, let's say, a felony two or felony three, because of being sentenced consecutive, they can do more time than somebody with a more serious felony one offense. So even if they take it to an appeals court, the appeals court usually rules in favor of the judge's discretion. So I was wondering how this might be addressed.
Well, first, thanks so much for for raising those two issues. The on on the first issue of of the guidelines, just understanding the guidelines, you know, one of the one of the efforts, I think, of of putting these proposals out is to try to think of ways to, it it looks more complicated, but actually to try to simplify the guidelines that by having more, you know, these more narrow and targeted ranges, you have more confidence in in what that recommendation is. Is it probation or jail or prison, not all three? And then what do those numbers mean? And and as I think you know, those numbers are ranges of what the minimum term of confinement is, not the min and the max. But but I think, you know, through this effort, we ones are more readily understood and and can be will will have a better understanding of what they're agreeing to. will have a better understanding of what they're agreeing to. The other issue that you raise though is critical, and that's concurrent consecutive sentencing. And we have, we have talked about that a lot over the years. And the problem is coming up with a with guidelines or recommendations around around concurrent consecutive. So just at a public hearing last Tuesday, a number of assistant district attorneys raised the same issue about the benefit of having more consistency in the use of concurrent and consecutive sentences. So I I think it, I think a lot of people see the value of it. The question has always been, what are those rules or what are the guidelines for concurrent consecutive sentencing? So so I guess I I'd ask you, and and if not now, you know, at any time, what what are some things you think would be helpful in terms of trying to make that more consistent? Like, what are times or circumstances where you think sentences should be imposed concurrently? Versus what are situations where you think it's appropriate that courts consider consecutive? And and keep in mind, these would be like everything else with these guidelines advisory. So in special circumstances and in things that are not typical, courts have the discretion to to do the opposite, right? We could be recommending concurrent and they could do consecutive. But but, you know, just trying to figure out what the rules of the road would be in terms of using concurrent versus consecutive. So I don't know if you've given any thought to that. And if not now, feel free, you know, to to think about it and and we'd welcome comments on that.
Thank you. And also, it seems that in this state, when somebody is arrested and charged with things, they can get 16 different charges. And then, you know, there's multiple counts. So when we are considering taking it to trial or taking a plea, we're told, well, you know, if you take it to trial, you're going to be, you know, facing this and this and this and this, you know, you're facing all of your counts, all of your charges. So you could be looking at 50 years. So it's almost like there's fears placed in us that, well, I better take a plea. And like Ms. Adams said, a lot of the times I feel like that happens because the courts don't want to be tied up with too many people taking it to trial. But then even when you take a plea, if it's not explained to you what an open plea is, where the judge still has a discretion to sentence you to what they feel. Sometimes people are still given lengthy sentences, harsh sentences. So how would that be addressed? Because like I said, you commit a crime, but then you're faced with a felony one, a felony two, a felony three, a misdemeanor three. And they'll tell you, well, you can plead to that felony two charge. And then with five counts, you know, things could, like I said, be run consecutive.
Right. And and I think first, we have to recognize that, you know, each prosecutor, each police department really has a lot of discretion as well. So how how a department charges someone and then the decisions made by the prosecutor in prosecuting the case or negotiating a plea could vary from certainly from county to county, but also from department to department. And so, you know, that there's not a lot the commission can do to regulate or standardize those practices. But but we look to the DA's association to, you know, the public law enforcement and others to try to try to encourage standardization so that you don't have these wild swings from, you know, case to case where if you look at the facts of the case, they look pretty similar. But when you get into the courtroom, they look very different. So so I think, you know, prosecutors and others work together. And I hope, you know, trying to have things a little bit more standardized there can can be helpful. But but our job at the commission and with guidelines is to try to, you know, take what we receive and try to make it as uniform and proportional as possible, you know, recognizing, you know, whatever we receive might not be uniform and proportional, right? But but we're trying to make sure what we have is is fairly consistently handled. And and as you said, you know, the the one, I think, exception, one of the things we're doing right now with these proposals is trying to narrow those recommendations. So they are more consistent and standardized. And if you're negotiating a plea, you you can sort of rely on that. But the one thing we don't address and and what could help to standardize things is if we did have some type of guidelines regarding concurrent and consecutive sentencing. Because I think that is where you do see cases very substantially from, you know, they they look the same on paper, but they're quite different in terms of the the end sentence. So so that's why I really focus on that point. I think some of the other things we're doing will promote more uniformity at the individual offense level. But concurrent consecutive can really knock that out.
Thank you. One, another thing, in looking at the guidelines and comparing them to the current ones and the ones that you proposed, I was wondering, how did you decide which crimes should be increased in times and which ones should be decreased? What studies or evidence were used? Because it seems that with some things, let's say, in the current standard, something is a 10 on the gravity score, which let's say you had no prior record. It's 22 to 36 months. But on the one that's proposed now, you would be a 23 and it's 30 to 42 months, which seems to have been an increase of eight months. But then other charges seem to have been decreased.
Yeah, really good question. So I'll I'll try to be brief about this, but I'm generally not brief. So so here's how we started this. We took three years of sentences imposed, so 2017, 2018, and 2019, so pre-COVID. And we we gathered all of the sentences imposed in Pennsylvania and reported to the commission. And then we looked only at zero prior record score. Because we we were making other changes to prior record score, so we didn't want that to be part of it. We just wanted to look at what the baseline sentence recommendation should be. So we had hundreds of thousands of sentences and we were able to break it down for each specific offense. Now, there were some offenses that no sentences were reported, but a lot of them had sentences reported. And so what we did was for each of those offenses, we figured out what the median sentence was. So if you think you had, you know, 100 and some sentences reported for an offense, we basically lined up those sentences from the lowest to the highest. So we start with like probation sentences and then we moved to jail and then we moved to prison. But we sort of have this line of sentences. And and when we got to like jail, we looked at the the length of the minimum term, you know, one month, two month, three month, and same on the state side. So we had basically from high to low. And then we found the midpoint, you know, at 50%. And we said, what was that value? Was it probation or jail or prison? And then whatever that was, what was the duration of it? And then we use that as the point that we would use as sort of the reference point to assign the new offense gravity score. And the idea was we were going to take the current range, the current standard range. And then we were going to find, we were going to use this this median sentence to figure out what part of the current range we would use for the new assignment. Because the the current offense gravity scores, that 14 point scale has been built over time. There's a lot of factors that go into that. So that was sort of our starting point, our footprint. But we wanted to narrow it a lot. And sometimes if you had a range that had both probation and jail, the question was, which of those do you pick if you only get to use one in a recommendation? So that median sentence would would tell us, should we pick probation or should we pick jail? You know, which, what was the median sentence? And then when we picked that disposition, then we'd figure out what the typical sentence was. What was that median duration? And we'd use that as well. So that's why you're absolutely right. For some of those like OGS 10s, they might have become a 22 or a 21 or a 23 because we were looking at what the median sentence was and what part of the existing range was the best fit. So we did that so that when we were presenting something to the public that you could look just as you did at an offense and see what the like new proposal would be, you had sort of a consistent basis to look at that. You'd know what we were thinking about, like, what was our our plan? Like, how are we doing this? But the next step of this process, after we hear all these comments, the commission will have to actually do those assignments. And the commission will have to decide, is what we came up with a good fit? Or for certain offenses, was it, you know, too high or too low? You know, should we be adjusting those those values? Because nothing is locked in. This is just the best we could do at comparing the the proposal to what we have in place right now. But at the same time, like narrowing the targeting the focus a little bit. So that was the whole plan. So if if that sort of makes sense, then the the thing is for for any offenses you identify, does that seem like a good recommendation? Or would you recommend something different, something, a different disposition like probation instead of jail? Or a different duration, like three months instead of seven months or or whatever? So so this is just part of that process. We wanted to give everyone some tools to work with, but it's not, it's not predetermined. It's just, this was like a a logical way of coming up with that crosswalk, that comparison.
And I'm just gonna hop in, hop in really briefly on that because those of us who sit have heard that and seen it on charts and had it explained over and over, and it's a lot to digest. So I'm sure that is a lot for you. But I think based upon what the executive director indicated, if there are offenses or there are things you see specifically that you would have suggestions on, you can still submit those to the commission. Because asking you right now, it's a lot. But if you have something right now, that's great. But if you want to submit something, that is another option. And you can continue.
Okay, thank you. Also, what I've seen over the years is a lot of the programming is for nonviolent offenders or things like Triple R I and the new thing about Boot Camp. Why is there nothing in place yet for violent offenders? Why are violent offenders never considered for things like pre-release?
Yeah. That's really the four programs that we that we reference. So Triple R I, Boot Camp, State Drug Treatment Program, and the Early Parole. Those four are are written into statute and they they are considerations the department must consider or can consider at at classification, right? So so that's why we build them into the guidelines. Because those are the ones we talked about earlier where judges can can make someone eligible or ineligible or recommend or not recommend someone for those types of programs, those sort of special programs. Beyond that, it it really is a a decision by by the department. And so if the General Assembly were to create additional programs at the department that would allow for early consideration of release, things like that for for violent offenders, then we would build it into the guidelines as well. But we really have to have the authority of the legislature to to make recommendations like that. Because right now, there's, you know, except for things like like for our eye, there's really not a provision for an early release from a minimum term. And our guidelines are making recommendations about that minimum term. So so if there was something else in statute, that would be an opportunity. But but we're a little bit limited on that. And then I I just throw in the suggestion I made during the first, I think, institution, and that is there's the the clemency process. So some of what you're talking about really talks about commutation or other, and so we can always make recommendations to them as well. But, you know, we just don't have the the authority to recommend something that would be outside of what what's already required by statute. Any other comments or questions? Oh, go ahead.
I'm just a few. I mean, I do know that there are senators and possibly other lawmakers listening right now. So I would encourage them to try to consider some sort of good time or pre-release policy. I know that other states do have this. It seems that the only thing that we're promised in the state of Pennsylvania is our maximum sentence. And that's very discouraging to us because when we're sentenced, you know, we're given a minimum to a maximum time. And it seems that some inmates, you know, they work hard, they're compliant with their prescriptive plan, they do their treatment programs, they try to seek employment, they steer clear of trouble and misconducts. And when they see parole, they're not always guaranteed parole the first time around, even though they've been a model inmate. Then you have other people that, you know, did the bare minimum. And especially with COVID now, they don't have to work, they don't have to do treatment programs. And they may get paroled the first time. I think that if there was some sort of incentive for the inmates to work towards, they, you know, might try to rehabilitate rehabilitate themselves more. I know in the neighboring state of New Jersey, they have good time. There's commutative credits where it's based on a statutory schedule of one third of your sentence, less jail credits. Those jail credits are work credits where for every five days you work, you get one credit. This is where inmates can learn skills that can help them when they are paroled. Because one of the biggest things that we face leaving here is gaining employment. One of the reasons why people reoffend is because they are not given the opportunities or tools while they are incarcerated. So when they leave here, they don't really know what to do. They can't find employment, so they go back to committing crimes. Also, there's minimum custody credits where you earn three minimum custody credits for each month during your first year and five for every year thereafter. So that would also encourage inmates to do what they're supposed to, behave accordingly, work on themselves so that they can have these minimum custody credits. And I feel that that would help us better. The recidivism rates would go down. Also, for life sentences, we still have life without parole in this state. Other states have life with the eligibility of parole. It doesn't guarantee that they're going to be paroled the first go around. But on some states, it's 25 years and then you can earn good time credits. So is there going to be any consideration ever for life sentences? To have the possibility of parole?
Sure. Look, you you put a lot on the table there. So let me let me just hit a couple of these points. The the first one is, you know, sort of the difference between what's what's available by statute and and what the guidelines can can recommend. So I I think you're absolutely right. If, you know, some kind of structure like Triple R I that applied to violent offenders for people convicted of violent offenses would is along the lines of what I think you're you're suggesting that there can be effectively earned time or good time available for individuals who have convictions for violent offenses. And so that's certainly, you know, that's that's something that General Assembly can consider and and look into. And if that was built, if that was enacted, then the commission could could build that into the guidelines as well. Pennsylvania sort of operates in the opposite direction, as you said. So in in Pennsylvania, they view the minimum term as the the term you're you're serving. And then the question is, have you, do you, there's no right to parole. So they take into account those factors you talked about in terms of whether you're appropriate and eligible for parole. And so it's almost, you know, if you're not doing well, you lose the the prospect of of parole. So it it works sort of in the opposite direction. But but as I said to earlier panels, the commission is also looking at parole guidelines and will have another set of public hearings in probably May or June. And I'd encourage you to look at those. And I'd encourage you to look at those parole guidelines as well. Because, you know, part of that is incentivizing good behavior, all the things you talked about, to promote parole at the earliest option, you know, at, at, at the minimum term. So just like we want some consistency at sentencing, we also want consistency at parole that promotes public safety. And what you're talking about is consistent with that. So, you know, if, if and until there's changes to the statute that would allow someone to be, um, paroled prior to the men for, um, for someone who's committed a violent offense. Um, the, the other thing to look at is what are the standards or guidelines or procedures that the board considers when paroling someone? And we want to promote parole at the earliest time if someone is doing all the right things and is prepared for parole. So we want consistency there too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Breckley, did you have anything else before I went to Ms. Appleton?
Um, no, um, I just wanted to add on to what one of the gentlemen said about a greater need for reentry services. Um, and that every inmate that doesn't have a life sentence is going to reenter into society. So I believe there is a greater need, looking at, you know, the programs that we have in place now. Um, it, it seems that they're sort of lacking. Uh, there's, I worked as a reentry peer assistant and I know that at the time, my boss and the staff members, they did try, but there wasn't much funding. Um, it, it needs to start in-house and that way the recidivism rates can go down. And like I mentioned, a greater need for things like employment workshops. A lot of the women don't know how to write resumes. I'm sure men also, um, they don't know how to fill out a proper application, how to even address the fact that they've had a criminal record when they go into interviews. Um, and also there is a greater need for cognitive behavioral changes and identifying what your red flags are, what led you to be incarcerated, how you can work on yourselves and how you can learn the coping skills to have the tools for when you get out to not commit crimes again, not to reoffend. Um, so I hope that that also gets addressed in the future.
Well, and, and just one of the, one of the steps that has been taken in recent years to try to promote exactly that is to move community and institutional supervision into one area. So the Department of Corrections now is responsible for all of that. And, and the idea was that there would be not only a smoother transition from an institution out to the community, but really, you know, sort of programming that, that's just this continuum. So, so, you know, that's recent, right? We, the DOC has just, the legislation just passed last year, although there was some efforts before that to, to give the department sort of a little more holistic supervision to be able to do that sort of continuum that you're talking about, you know, starting within the institution, continuing into the community. And, and look, it's to the department's, uh, interest that, that that be successful. So, so giving them that kind of authority can be really helpful. And I, I, you know, I, I know they're listening and I know they've been working on this. But I think you've raised a really good point about making sure you are starting it at the point of commitment. You know, the, the whole reentry process, but continuing it out into the community and making sure the resources are there. So thanks for raising that point. It's really important one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I just want to comment on, I don't have any great suggestions for, but I appreciate what you're saying about, um, like CBT, uh, and cognitive behavioral therapy, behavioral modification and the benefits of having that on the front end to use as a tool throughout, uh, your incarceration instead of gaining it as a tool in the toolbox as they step you out the door. So, um, I think that those are great suggestions. And then, um, Ms. Breckley, if you're complete, I'll turn it over to Ms. Appleton.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for have, thank you for being here and having me here. Where do I go from here? Every, I'm last. Everything was pretty much addressed. Um, however, I'm going to go this route. Um, I speak with a lot of women. I've been incarcerated 11 years and been a peer specialist for nine. So I speak to all kinds of women, ages, uh, crimes, everything. And everything that's been addressed has been wonderful so far. Um, I'd like to bring up the fact that, well, this is a big one for people when it, it is time for parole. And we've already been sentenced and we've been given long sentences. And we've done our time and we've done our time well. A lot of the women asked me to address this where the district attorney and judge still have a say at time of parole, whether or not women are to be released. And I promised I would bring that up.
Well, thank you for raising that. And that is something that was raised during our parole hearings a, a couple of years ago. And that will, will of course be, be, um, open for discussion during our next hearings on the parole guidelines. Um, the, yeah, the, you know, the, the idea of, um, of reaching back to the district attorney and the prosecutor, and the prosecutor and the, and the judge in a case for recommendations at parole or comments regarding parole has been, been part of the process. And, and we had built that into our preliminary guidelines and took public comment on that. And, um, and I think one of the, one of the things that was raised during those hearings in the past was not that, that you don't consider any kind of thoughts or comments the judge or DA has from the case, but that you give equal consideration to the comments from the Department of Corrections, who has been involved in and working with the individual, the entire time the person has been, uh, in the institution. And so can talk to, um, progress and motivation and all kinds of positive things as well. It, it's also important to note that there are prosecutors and, and, uh, and judges who, who are in favor of, of parole as well. So it's not, w- one of the concerns was, uh, is it, is there common if negative used as a veto for parole? And I think we're trying to make sure that we address that, that, that we recognize the importance of considering their comments. But equally reconsider, um, other factors, including positive factors. So what the, what the commission is trying to be, has been trying to focus on in the parole guidelines is, is what we sort of categorizes as preparedness, that the person is prepared to, to be paroled. Because again, there's no right to parole. So we want to make sure that a person is, is ready and prepared to be paroled. And, and we want to encourage people to work for that to happen the first time they're eligible for parole. So, um, so I encourage you to, you know, to look at the parole guidelines when we, um, put them out for public comment, probably in May or June. And, um, and we will have public hearings. And so I encourage you to, to participate in those or, or write to us. Uh, just let us know what you think or any changes. And, and hopefully, you know, the point you raised, um, i- is, is an important point. And, and that, that I, I hope you, you think that it's, it's fair or appropriate the way we're addressing it. But if it's not, let us know as well.
Okay, thank you. I just want to go over what we've already, um, sentencing guidelines for life sentences. I mean, I just, I, it would just, there can be sentences for, you know, life without the possibility of parole. So could Pennsylvania, you know, life sentences, people be seen after 20, 25 years? Could they be given that chance? Um, when addressing children and human trafficking, I think sentencing is too lenient for that. Um, I won't go into everything, but being a woman and in jail with plenty of women, I think that's an important issue. Because the sentencing in Pennsylvania is just so far and in between where one person can get a long sentence for one crime and the same crime. They don't, even if it is the first time for both of them. Um, good time for violent offenders, long-termers, um, who do everything right, they're misconduct free. Uh, that would be amazing, good time for Pennsylvania. Um, and possibly flat sentences. Could we, um, maybe address something like good time and flat sentences?
Well, that's a, that's a big list. And, and let me, uh, let me hit a couple of those, uh, great, I, great, great comments. And, and, uh, let me start with the, um, with the life sentences and, and, um, guidelines. Um, I think you were right to sort of separate out life without the possibility of parole versus life where there is a min and a max, but the max is life or is effectively life. And, um, you know, the, the guidelines are intended to apply to any case that is not life without parole. Any case in which paroling is available, where the court has to set a minimum term. And then the parole guidelines about parole decisions based on that. So we're always looking at those cases where there's some discretion that can be exercised. So if the general assembly has said it's life without the possibility of parole, the commission roy doesn't have a role there. But, but through this and through other means, um, you're right. Members of the general assembly would have to take action to provide an exception to life without the possibility of parole or to change that in some way. Now, now look, that, that happened after the Miller decision, right? In terms of, of individuals under 18 years of age convicted of murder one and murder two. And then what the commission did in that case was created guidelines for parole for those under 18 years of age. Um, now we were, we were limited to some degree because there were also mandatory minimum sentences that applied to those cases. So the only guidelines we could offer were those in excess of the mandatory minimum. But nonetheless, that is an opportunity. That shows you that, you know, the, the general assembly or the courts can change things. And so for life without the possibility of parole, it would require some kind of change like that in order for the commission to even be able to recommend anything. And then depending if there were mandatory minimums that applied to it in terms of the mandatory minimum term, uh, we would be bound by, we could not recommend anything less than that. So those are just some of the, you know, sort of the civics of that. Um, but, but, um, clearly there are, there are individuals in the general assembly that have been looking at this and talking about this, talking in terms of, you know, some type of, you know, after some period of years, there's parole eligibility. So, um, so there are, are individuals you can certainly talk to, to, to try, try to promote that. I took note of what you said about human trafficking and children and, and, uh, will clearly, um, you know, ask the commission to be looking at the sentence recommendations for those. We've heard that before for, you know, sex offenses, violent offenses and so forth. So, you know, the commission takes a lot of care and looking at those and, and I'll make sure we, we look at, um, the issues you raised. And then as, as far as good time for violent offenders, um, you know, there again, i- it would have to be authorized by statute. So, um, this is, it's helpful that you raise it. Um, I hope, you know, people are hearing and, and, um, there's, there's certainly, um, you know, the commission, if, if there was support for it, can make recommendations to the general assembly, but really can't act on it unless the general assembly, uh, changes existing statutes. And that, that applies to flat sentences as well. We are what's called an indeterminate sentencing state, right? We, we build into our structure a minimum term because generally there's then the eligibility for parole and community supervision, that reentry process. There's other states that just have flat sentences and then often have, you know, post-release supervision or something like that. So it's just, we, we are structured differently, but that doesn't mean the general assembly can't make changes. So, but it, but it would require their action. And, uh, and as we discussed, there are certainly, um, individuals in the general assembly that are open to and, and consider these kind of things. And, and, uh, you know, we, we, um, you know, cooperate and, and, and try to, uh, to, uh, follow that, that lead. So, so thanks for th- those suggestions.
Thank you. There's just one more thing and I won't keep it, keep you, uh, any longer. Um, as far as the DOC programming that we all want so badly, um, would we address the secretary of prisons for something like that? How could we as inmates, um, since you mentioned that to within the DOC? Uh, how would we go about doing that? Would we go through the secretary of prisons? Is that what we need to do to get programming within our prison? I know my judge was able, I'm sorry, was able to actually sentence me to the therapeutic community, which is drug and alcohol. So he did have that. He was able to actually make that part of my sentence, that I had to do that. So I'm wondering if there was programming that, that we could get in place. And then as far as sentencing, that programming could become part of sentencing.
Yeah, thank you. That's, well, look, let me just mention that the, the secretary of corrections is an ex officio member of the commission. And, and I believe is participating on this call, but others at the DOC are. And my, um, my experience over a lot of years has been that the DOC is, is, is always willing to look at that. They're trying to make sure they have adequate and appropriate programming. And, and they have, over the years have made, you know, change upon change to try to improve what they're doing. So I think they are open to it. I'm not going to get into the particulars and, and you can talk to the superintendent there or others, others, uh, in the facility about the right, right people to contact. But I, I know that, um, that the DOC has been very open. We work with the department all the time and the department works closely with the legislature all the time to really try to address these kind of things you're raising. So I'd, I'd encourage you to, you know, to talk to, uh, yeah, I'm not sure the, the right person within your facility, but perhaps through your superintendent, um, and perhaps even writing to the, the secretary. But I've, I've always been impressed with the DOC, you know, trying to improve what they're doing, always checking what they're doing. They have a whole department that just does research and tries to develop programming that's, that's, you know, evidence-based. So I, I, I think there's a real willingness to, to do that. So I just encourage you to, you know, don't, don't be afraid to, to, to reach out. Because I think you'll find, um, that there's, that, that they want to do the right thing too. And hearing from you would be really important. So, um, so I, I will, um, I, as I said, I, a number of the institutions and, uh, individuals are on this call. And, uh, I, I hope that they'll reach out to you or you can reach out to them to, um, to, uh, follow up on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Anybody from the, uh, anybody else have comment from the commission? Okay, I just wanted to, uh, close by, from my end, by thanking, uh, the 12 participants today for the, uh, input that they have. And also, uh, let you all know that the commission is, is pretty diverse. And we're blessed to have, uh, individuals who are really committed. Uh, we have a lot of innovators. I think DA Sunday is a good example of that with some of the things that he's doing in his county. And so we get input like that, um, to help. But it's, 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 we're not static. It's always changing and it's always trying to improve. Uh, and input, um, from all of you is instrumental in that. So thank you for your participation. Please remember that this isn't your one time. If you have things that you want to either write to or participate in other public hearings for a situation such as parole, um, those are available to you. And, and then I'll turn it over to the executive director to conclude. And then I have to run for a hearing that I'm late for. But thank you all. Um, and I'll turn it over to, to Mark Berstrom.
Thank you, Judge Bernstein. And, and thank you to, um, all the individuals who testified and to the Department of Corrections, the secretary and Diana Woodside and, uh, and others who helped to, uh, set this up. Um, I think this was valuable. And, and as I said, um, for, for those, um, from outside the institutions that were observing this, um, just a reminder that we have, uh, several more hearings. Um, but this week, the next hearing is on Wednesday at two o'clock at Duquesne University School of Law. It's an onsite public hearing. And on Friday, um, we will have a remote, a web, uh, And on Friday, we will have a remote, a web Zoom webinar, public hearing for anyone to testify. That begins at 9 o'clock, I'm sorry, 10 o'clock Friday morning with information available from our website. Um, I want to thank everyone for their participation. And and also to those who testified, a reminder that be be checking your mailboxes or inboxes for information on parole guidelines for later in the next couple of months and for public hearings following from that. So thank you.
Thank you. I wish everybody be well and thank you very much. And with that, then the meetings and hearings are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.